Welcome, everybody. I would like to call this regular town council meeting to order. It's December 14th, 2023, and it's Christmas time. So, may we have a call to order? And roll call, please.
Councilmember Leva.
Here.
Councilmember Greer.
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Heberly.
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher.
President.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Here.
Mayor Palguda. We have a quorum.
And with us tonight, we're blessed to have Pastor Jeff Jackson from Christ Church of PV. And then will you lead us in the pledge after you pray for us?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'd be glad to. Let's pray. Gracious God, loving Father, Lord, we thank you for this community that we call home, Prescott Valley, a place of natural beauty and abundant resource. Lord, we thank you for the people of our community, our neighbors, friends, blessed with their many talents and abilities. Lord, we thank you for city government, our town servant leaders who are called to look out for our community's best interest. And so, Lord, we pray tonight that you'll guide this council, give them wisdom and discernment in all their deliberations and decisions, that it might bless and benefit the people of our city. And finally, Lord, we thank you for this blessed Christmas season, celebration of your son's birth. And Lord, may you bless us all with peace on earth, goodwill towards men. We pray all of this in the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior, your Son. Amen.
Amen.
And now, the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Pastor Jackson. Okay. At this time, we're going to do call to the public. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters listed on the agenda or solely on matters within the jurisdiction of the town. Any person wishing to address the council must register their name with the town clerk prior to commencement of the meeting. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Such remarks shall be limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. Okay. May we have our first speaker?
Diane Gomez.
Ms. Gomez.
Sorry, maneuver. Hi, my name's Diane Gomez, and I live at 11550 East Deer Trail Lane. It's difficult for me to understand what might be going on in PV these days. While we can all agree that there are some amazing accomplishments, like tighter regulations on group homes, attention to the water deficit issue, and really nice new roads, I also see many PV residents and their neighbors being treated as chicken littles whenever they voice their very real concerns regarding other progressive PV projects. Most of us contact the town council only when we feel the peace and tranquility of our homes are being threatened. Examples of anti-peace and tranquility, anti-town and country feel projects are the Observatory. I am wondering why a developer might believe it's a possibility that they could get a 2,000 leased manufactured home project approved by this council in a space where only 200 homes are zoned. This is a project where even the developer's lawyer confirms that they will be exploiting the state water loophole. Why would the developer waste their time and money unless they thought they had a chance? And why do we, the people, have to be implicitly denigrated by a virtue signaling commercial authored by the landowners? As they purport that this project would help nurses, teachers, firemen, and policemen attain an entree into homeownership, doesn't that imply that those who oppose this project are some type of heartless evildoers? I would suggest that since the home would cost $300,000, why not be really generous and sell them the land underneath? This would only increase the mortgage payment by about $100 a month. This seems like it would be better than leasing the land to them to start over $600 a month. And then there's the blasting pit. This is another residential nightmare offered by the landowners. The pit is to be located within hearing distance of three communities, two of which are not PV voters. The land in question has a land use of residential in the GPA. This is not blasting mine land use, so the landowners want to change it to industrial land use. And if this request gets by P&amp;Z and the town council, I hear it will go before the unelected Board of Adjustments. This is the same board that voted 100% for Clipper Courts despite the huge community presence against it. So if the blasting mine goes to them, well, I don't hold that much hope that they will vote in favor of the residents. In response to this land use change request, which is considered a minor GPA due to its only being 40-acre parcel, we, the people, have initiated an official petition to change this from a minor to a major GPA. While this is a lot of work for us old folks, we are trying to help you get the landowners to respect your GPA, which, as the mayor proudly points out, was voted in by a majority of PV voters. Recently...
Okay. Thanks. Thank you, Ms. Gomez.
Bill Williams.
Mr. Williams.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council. Bill Williams, longtime Arizona resident with a master of science degree in journalism. Some are trying to make residents worried about how much water we have. We have plenty. But if you are concerned for 10 to 20 years from now, that's valid, and it's on the city to plan for that. If you look at the United States Geological Survey's figures and Arizona Department of Water Resources figures, which our town management uses, we are tapping into two aquifers, one that you are all sitting on top of right now, known as the Aguafria. It's linked to the little Chino Aquifer to our northwest, and those two are linked to another large aquifer northwest towards Paulden called the Big Chino. Of course, you know, an aquifer is not a pool of water. You can't shove a pipe into it and expect it to flow. It's a delicate mix of water, sand, and gravel. We're sitting on top of 2.9 million acre-feet of water. An acre-feet is 326,000 gallons. The best guesses say the Big Chino has seven to 10 million acre-feet of water as well. To put it in perspective, Prescott and Prescott Valley tap into that set of aquifers and use about 13,000 acre-feet of water per year combined. As you know, we are in a joint venture to move water from the Big Chino Water Aquifer along a 30-mile pipe to Prescott and onto Prescott Valley. As I've stated before, the $150-million pipeline to Paulden could be a pipe dream that could create 100 years of water flow with Prescott's help. But the Phoenix entity, Salt River Project, has its grip on the water rights, too, so we may never be able to afford it financially or politically. Costs are being revised right now. Two of our town's presentations tonight include water rates, and I'm opposed to an increase, and also a new ordinance which could be seen as overriding state law on the rental loophole. The town should be letting the legislature figure that out. Regarding the water studies and water models, they're just wild-ass guesses, and we're using old statistics. But Prescott and Prescott Valley has a large contract with a hydrology and engineering firm to give us the final be-all, end-all water model report. But those old guesses are all we got, and the new team is two years late delivering their new water model to us, and that will simply be our next wild-ass guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Sharon Freed.
Ms. Freed.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Freed. I live at 86314 Zip Code. I'm going to be reading Stop the Quarry for Carrie McCann and Ken Foine, who can't be here tonight. We live in Mingus West, across 89A from the C-Mex Vulcan Materials Facility located on Fane Land. It's like living in the quarry. Fane Signature Group has applied for rezoning to allow for a part-time-use sand and gravel mining operation off Old Black Canyon Highway. There is no such thing as a part-time-use mine quarry. Part-time is a means of getting a foot in the door. It will just get worse. In 2021, C-Mex got a revision of its air quality control permit for the 89A operation. This increased output from 5,500 tons to 8,700 tons per day, reclassified from a portable source to a stationary source, and added three additional rock conveyors to the wash plant. Do you really think a similar move will not be made at the proposed quarry? Fane recently postponed its rezoning request to hear more public feedback. Included in that news report was a Fane public relations release that downplays and dismisses the risks of a quarry in a residential area. Based on our experience, here's what residents can expect: gritty silt over everything in and outside of the house, and in your lungs. This can lead to deadly silicosis and possible exposure to valley fever. There is constant traffic, as many as three to five trucks per minute, including 18-wheel bulk carriers, cement trucks, dump trucks, and other heavy commercial vehicles that enter and exit the plant day and night. Uncovered loads cause road hazards. We've had to replace all of our car windshields. We have to stop talking on the phone when trucks go by. We can't enjoy our own backyard or have visitors due to continuous noise and grit. Blasting feels like an earthquake and has five-foot cracks in our ceiling. Prevailing winds blow huge clouds of dust towards our house. The 24/7 plant operation causes interrupted sleep, no peace during the day. Beep beep, rock crushers, unmuffled engine braking. We have to yell at each other when outside in order to hear over the noise. Here is what the rock crusher sounds like at 10:30 at night. Now it's not going to play. Oh, well, I don't know why it's not playing. Too bad. It's pretty bad. Unhooded searchlights are never turned off and glare brightly into the house at night. The place is an eyesore with dust rising up in the air, dead trees, piles of broken concrete and gravel. As the mud from water trucks dries, it collects on the truck wheels and gets transported onto 89A, causing even more dust. Property values, according to a Realtor in general, are decreased. Along with the dust is the nauseating smell of asphalt and VOCs. Particulate and silica emissions will compromise the respiratory and cardiac health of the individuals living in the area. Our neighbors on both sides moved because of the noise, and the man we bought our house from moved due to lung problems. What happens when the resources have been stripped bare? Will they move out and leave a superfund site for us, as the mining mayor did? The state attorney general was so concerned about a mining operation near homes that she filed an injunction stopping the one in Chino Valley. This quarry will be a public nuisance and put residents in a position of no recourse when, as you have told us, you can do nothing about the noise and pollution coming from the plant and the incessant commercial traffic. Say no to a rezoning that would allow Fane mining quarry operations at Old Black Canyon Highway. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Freed.
Atolano Olivas.
Mr. Olivas.
Atolano Olivas.
Welcome, sir.
Welcome. I'd like to say hi to my Prescott Valley citizens.
Mr. Olivas, could you please speak in the mic? A little bit closer for us.
I'd like to say hi to the Prescott Valley citizens. Wish them a well, good Christmas, a happy New Years, a sober one and a prosperous one. Now, I would like to know how many city council members are, have, or are related to real estate?
Mr. Olivas, can you just please deliver your comments for us?
Oh, I'm trying.
Thank you, sir.
How many of you are related to real estate?
Mr. Olivas, we're not going to do a survey here. We would like to hear your comments, though, please.
That's one of the comments. We're having problems right now in Navajo and Saratoga area and also Lake Shore. Okay? We got builders coming in. We don't have the infrastructure to support it. And some Realtor companies are pushing this very hard. When we go to the meetings, they talk down to us, they filibuster us. They don't understand that we don't have the infrastructure for it. They're trying to push a lot of traffic through Saratoga. I don't think you people have taken a drive up there and seen it. You haven't seen Lake Shore. The drainage there should have been straightened out and concreted in, so they don't have to pull maintenance on it every year, almost year-round. You spend money on it. You spend money on a library that is a complete falter. The design's bad on it. You can't seal the roof because the way it's designed, you get fungus in there. No, don't spend any more money on that. Spin it the right, correct way. Okay? Fix the drainage system on there. If we have concrete and sidewalks implemented, that takes care of the road chipping away, and also drainage is tied to the sidewalk. We control flooding. Take care of us, live up to your responsibility, represent us correctly. Don't anger us, or we're put in a corner and we'll start demonstrating. That's the next thing that's going to happen when that project goes through. You'll have demonstrations out there. I will call for them, and I'll organize it.
Thank you, Mr. Olivas. Merry Christmas. Patricia Betsel. I'm sorry, could you repeat that? Patricia Betsel. Welcome.
Hi there. Patricia Betsel, 3883 North Fairfax Road, PV. I am also giving a speech on behalf of Carrie McCann, who couldn't be here this evening. A growing number of Prescott Valley citizens have a serious problem with the rapid pace of development in our town due to water concerns. Town officials have acknowledged our water supply is already at risk. That risk can be lessened if you, mayor and council, slow development to a sustainable pace. We voted for you, trusting you would fulfill your roles as elected public servants to serve our values, our beliefs, and our wishes. You said every voice would be heard, but when it comes to conserving our precious land and its limited resources, it seems you serve instead the louder voices of one sector, those involved in construction, development, and real estate who wish to plunder our land. We are appalled and angry that our mayor and council have allowed things to go this far and are willing to approve even more unsustainable development. Many of our officials have a clear conflict of interest in our benefiting. Hear us as we protest loudly to drown out the voices of those wishing to profit from what could eventually lead to Prescott Valley becoming the largest ghost town in Arizona. It is said that Granville Fane told his descendants to be stewards of the land to raise it to its highest purpose. It seems instead that the Fane family has turned from being stewards of the land to stewards of development. And judging from the pace of development, it appears that the town is right in step with these developers. Our voices are being dismissed by the very folks we elected to represent us. We have little issue with thoughtful and sustainable development that will not tax our fiscal and our natural resources, but what continues to occur is unacceptable. We are fed up. We are angry that our quality of life is being threatened by your management, or rather mismanagement, of our diminishing water supply as well as growth. In my newsletter, the Water Resources Research Center noted that in Yavapai County, the projected population growth rate is double the national average. Drought and climate change, as well as reduction in watershed, pose significant risk, declining water tables, and long-term effects on water supply. Watersheds, if you don't know it, are what move water into streams, lakes, and rivers. So stopping runaway development is a key to solving our water problem. From 2020 to present, the council approved 22 developments with almost 3,000 housing units. And now, developers are seeking approval for Lake Shore 650, the Observatory Senior Living Center, and a mining operation. Add in the Villas and Parsons Preserve that have a partial approval so far, that is, ladies and gentlemen, 8,292 housing units right now on their docket to be approved, and that will house approximately 25,000 people. So the housing project particularly threatening our water supply is the Fane Lake Shore 650. The town's newsletter says "Navigating Challenges" states the goal as prioritizing the health of the Upper Verde River and Aguafria watersheds. How can we preserve those watersheds if developers are permitted to build Lake Shore 650 right over it and involve massive efforts to move the flow and containment of the river and destroy the watershed, only to replace it with contaminated stormwater runoff and sewage? Not acceptable. In time, Mother Nature will take over, and the result will be a collapsed development and a destroyed watershed. Watershed management, if you don't know it, is a term that describes the use of land, forest, and water resources in ways that do not harm the plants and animals living there.
Thank you, ma'am.
And it's closely linked to conversation.
Are you close?
We demand this area be conserved to continue its higher purpose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Dandrea.
Welcome, sir.
Welcome. Greetings, Vice Mayor and Council. Tim Dandrea, I'm a resident of, I live on Old Black Canyon Highway just above the Prescott Country Club, about a stone's throw from our mayor's residence. I'm here to talk about the quarry that we've learned about recently. So there's an existing quarry, as we know, in town, and it was put in, you know, many, many years ago when Prescott Valley was just a dot, right? And now there's talk of a new quarry that's going to be located, hmm, next to about 5,000 residents between Stone Ridge and Prescott Country Club and Blue Hills to the south. And, you know, to us, to many of our neighbors, this is going to be completely in our view of our backyard. I think many of us realize that someday there might be some development down there. There might be homes down there, hopefully not high-density homes like the Observatory, but, you know, reasonable growth is kind of assumed will happen someday, but no one in their wildest dreams ever imagined a quarry would go there. What a silly idea. Nobody in their right mind in Yavapai County voter-wise would approve, I don't think, to have a quarry put in the town limits, a new quarry, so close to neighborhoods that are fairly large today. And so I just wanted to put that out. I am sure the Fanes have hundreds of other acres farther away from people, farther out of town. I know that would be less economical, but would be much more reasonable to the citizens to have a quarry away from residents and the accompanying noise and dust and traffic that goes with putting something in such a ridiculous location as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mike Schumacher.
Mike Schumacher. Mr. Schumacher. Welcome.
Hi, Council. Chairman of the Diamond Valley Water District, I'd like to thank you for the water you provide to us. Sorry, let me help you. Oh, okay. Under the new rates, we're going, by 2028, we're going to be paying $10 per 1,000 gallons by the third day because we buy between $3 to $5 million gallons a month from you guys on a four-inch meter. So I would just like to say we're doing our part to save the aquifer because by 2028, with, I've been crunching the numbers, I believe we'll be paying probably about $20 per 1,000 gallons. And I don't think anybody in here who's complaining about the aquifer drying up is going to be paying that much. And that's all I'd like to say is, oh, and I moved here September of 1977. And that's all I wanted to do, is address the people and defend the town, because if you vote blue, you vote for open borders and uncontrolled growth. Thank you.
Deborah Winter.
Ms. Winter.
Debbie Winter, 12963 East Toro Street, Prescott Valley. I wish to voice my support for the proposed non-subdivision residential development water policy. I am an advocate of water conservation. While I believe in managed practical growth for our community, I believe it's very important that any developer should come to the table with a pledge to the town that they have obtained sufficient water rights that would have been required to obtain a certificate of assured water supply from the state. I am appalled that our state legislature has failed to close this gaping loophole, and I applaud the Prescott Valley Town Council for taking action in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winter.
Welcome, ma'am.
Good evening, Council. Lillian Nickman, I've been paying a water bill for Prescott Valley for about eight years. I'm requesting tonight that you postpone any decisions about Agenda 8B for the storm drainage management creation on account of the Wildin study not providing enough sound information to make a decision. It's requesting a $4 million annual cost, and it doesn't state a capital improvement plan. It doesn't provide any details for what that $4 million will go towards. You can compare that to the water fee increase, 157 pages, which does lay out what the cost will cover. So the $4 million arbitrary number, the Wildin plan just said that it was an estimate, and that's to cover a 10-year, $30 million loan, and 30% of that's for operations and the rest of it for what exactly? Now, stormwater management services have been historically funded by the town, yet the Wildin study didn't say how much existing expenditures for maintaining ditches, storm systems, and coverts have cost thus far. There is also no mention of a study for flooding issues in Prescott Valley, and there are no estimates for, quote, "proper equipment" that will be funded by creating this department. Now, it's easy to scare Arizonans into compliance with the prospect of too much or too little water, but to pay $36 to $96 extra on top of increasing water fees, I think, would require more information, more detailed information as to what the cost is. And like the study says, only five cities in Arizona currently have drainage fee costs attached to water bills, and that is a very, very small minority in the state, and even smaller if you look at the map for the country. So please postpone your decision about that item today. Thank you.
No one else.
Ma'am, I hope you can stay for item 8B, and we might be able to answer some of your comments. I'm sorry, next?
No one else.
No one else. Is anybody else, would anybody else like to speak that didn't get a chance to put? Yes, sir, come on up.
Good evening, Councilman.
We're going to need...
My name is Tim Garn.
Okay.
I lived here in Prescott Valley for eight years, from the Midwest. I came through Prescott Valley back in 1989, and I thought, this is where I'm going to retire. I came out here eight years ago, bought a place and had it all fixed up, and I noticed around town, there's a lot of issues that has to be brought up, like, for example, like, I've been to the city hall, I mean, the code enforcer, they brought up a lot of issues, but it seems like it's not being taken care of. Like, on your code now, it says that you're not supposed to have commercial vehicles on your property, commercial vehicles out in the street. That's one issue, that they should address that. Number two, travel trailers and motorhomes on the property, people are still living in it. And I brought this up to the code enforcer, they only did one place, and that was it. And the problem with the code enforcer, I offered them a year or two ago, I'm retired, I offered to do it for free, and I drove from the east side of town to the west side of town. I've taken pictures, wrote down addresses, and all these places I see, the code's all Too many cars on the property. I went to code enforcer, I talked to one of the gals, and the way she talked, like, I told her, did you mean to tell, she said, well, if the tags are up the current, you can have as many cars as you want. Do you mean to tell me that I can have 30 cars on my property and all the tags are up the current, and that's okay? And she goes, well, that's the worst. I mean, where I'm from, if you got more than four cars, you only drive one, you better get a dealer's license. And I see, I drive around a lot of these places, and there's cars sitting there for months and months. And it's making Prescott Valley look like it's a boneyard or a used car lot. If I was going to go back home and people say, well, how do you like Prescott Valley? I tell you right now, I would tell them, don't come to the town because they're not doing nothing. Now, a code enforcer tells me they don't have... Now, the code enforcer tells me they don't have enough help. Private properties, there's a lot of issues on private property, stuff that's sitting there for years. Behind my place, there's a motorhome caught on fire, there's all kinds of stuff behind the property that caught the other house on fire, you know, burnt part of it. There's issues right there, they're not cleaning up their property. The problem with the people of Prescott Valley, I pay my taxes, don't tell me what to do. And I said that to the code enforcer, do what they said, you're right. And what's happened in Prescott Valley, the bubble's already busted. People just won't do, they don't have no respect for people's property, they don't have no respect for city hall, they have no respect for the law. Even you drive down Navajo, the speed limit is 25 miles an hour. I see them going down Navajo 45, 50 miles an hour. Even down by my house, I have a brother, he's 53 years old, he's disability, he's handicapped, he's dying of cancer. And that's 25 mile an hour and they're still flying down the road 45, 50.
Sir, can you wrap up your comments for us?
Pardon?
Can you wrap up your comments for us?
Yeah. It's just keep on going, I mean, people's attitude toward property, people have no respect for Prescott Valley, they just do what they want to do, you know? And I feel that in my heart, I wanted to retire here. And the way things are going right now, the way Prescott Valley's going right now, I'm going back up to the Midwest where I came from.
So, sir, I'm sorry to hear about your brother, but I'm going to ask you to walk outside with Ernest and for Ernest to get your name and phone number and pass it on to our new Neighborhood Services Director, Stephanie Robinson. Okay? Ernest is right here. Thank you, oh, Stephanie's here.
I'm about to hide him.
She's going to go outside and talk to you, she's our new Neighborhood Services Director.
Oh, okay.
There you go, sir.
I hope I can, you know, try to say something that's for the health of city.
I love so much. I'm convinced you're going to like her.
Thank you.
Okay, I saw a hand in the back. Anybody else? Hand in the back.
I'd like to know why. I should just address the-
You need to give us your name, please.
Ellen Hughes, I live on Kearney Drive, over by that proposed senior place, the one-time college. I'd like to know why you people are sitting here-
Can you please address your comments to us?
I am.
Well, but you-
I'm adjusting to them.
Right, but we can't hear you unless you use the microphone.
I'd like to know why nobody has brought up the idea of a moratorium on building. I'd like to know how close you have kept, you, the council members, how close you've kept to the 10-year project that the planning has proposed? Or is it just willy-nilly? We're a feeding ground, we, Prescott Valley residents, are the feeding ground for money-mongers, big guys playing. And we're not in any shape right now until we get an attorney to represent us that knows what they're doing and knows how to approach. If you women on this council do not feel that you're capable of stopping somebody with a big bucks, then you don't need to be on the council. When I moved here, I came here from California and it was, I wanted the solitude of this community. I want the Havelinas and the skunks and the damn antelope that used to be around my house. I don't see them anymore. I never locked my door from the day I moved here. Now I do. I've never owned a gun, but now I do. The graffiti is going to start piling up, the cars are going to start coming in, and there's going to be more damage to our roads, our infrastructure's going to go kaput. You can see right now with these new little areas of medical that are going in, they're popping up all over the place. Why? Because people that moved here are my age and older. I'm 82 and I might not be around tomorrow or five years from now. And they're, they need the medical out there. So, all I can say is, has anybody here looked into putting a moratorium on building? Say, just a minute, we're running a month. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Everybody, everybody got to speak, right? That wanted to?
I would say so.
Okay. You'll be our last speaker.
All right. I'm an Arizona native, I've been coming up here since-
Sir, we're going to need your name.
Ralph Foster, Arizona native. Arizona used to have a lot more weather, a lot more rain, a lot more snow. Over the years, we've watched it deplete, you know, weather changes, global warming, global cooling, whatever they want to say. We do not have the water in this area, nor do we have the roads in this area to keep letting builders. And I'm a commercial plumber and I've done all kinds of homes, commercial buildings, et cetera. We do not have the ability to grow up here, what's happening up here. And I think we all need to wake up in this town and realize Arizona's always been a dry state and it goes through droughts. But all the Californians, all the people pouring into this state, we can't let the growth continue in this area. We can't support it. We just don't have the water, we don't have the roads, 69 is a parking lot during the day, 89 is getting that way. I don't know where you're going to think that we can keep putting in roads and have the continued growth in this town, support the police departments, the fire departments. I mean, our Prescott Valley police are spread all over this town. I've had some health issues where I'd call an ambulance, it's faster. I live here in PV over at Minor, well, Blue's and Robert, and it took an ambulance, my wife was able to get me to the hospital quicker, saved my life. We just don't, we don't have the facilities, we don't have the roads, policemen, they get, you know, I don't know what you as a city council are thinking, I don't know how long you've lived in this state, but we cannot continue the growth in this town. This ugly contraption that you got going up over here, completely destroyed, they're finally straightening up the library and what city council members decided, the architect, that looked good. You know, I mean, where, you know, even this silly building. I grew up in Scottsdale, Snobsdale, watched that city get way overgrown, moved up here 25 years ago and I'm just watching the quality of life eroding. I've talked to the managers at Safeway, at Fry's, I don't, I'm not a Walmart shopper, but they need three or four grocery stores. The grocery stores don't want to build up here. I mean, the grocery stores, I've talked to the vendors, the guys that are busy, the subcontractors, they can't keep up with the growth. You know, it's, we're watching this city, I don't know how many of you just moved up here-
Thank you, sir.
But, bottom line, quality of life in this town is going down.
Thank you, sir, for your comments.
So, welcome to our little city.
Okay, now, we're moving on to number four, Council Communication Summary of Current Events, and we will start with Councilwoman Greer.
Well, I want to say a big thank you to the town staff for the lovely Christmas tree lighting that we had and all of the activities all afternoon, all of the activities for the kids, ice skating, everything, and the beautiful tree lighting. I just want to thank them all, it was a wonderful event.
This afternoon, we had a coffee with a cop and, from what I understand, it is, it has been a monthly event and it is going to go to quarterly after the first of the year. But it was very, it's been very beneficial for council and for our Prescott Valley police to attend these events. I had an opportunity to spend some time talking to four of our constituencies, constituents today and, rather, yesterday, and it helps to alleviate a lot of what is being discussed and it is a very beneficial program that the police have. So, in the new year, you might possibly put this on your calendar to attend these coffee with the cops. They go all over Prescott Valley and try to include numerous businesses and it's very beneficial not only for the businesses, but also for our residents. Thank you.
Councilwoman Schumacher?
I have the privilege of attending the, I don't know if my microphone's working, sorry. I had the privilege of attending the board meeting for the CASA Senior Center and a lot of people are thinking that you have to be 50 or 55 to be able to join and that's not true, so I just kind of want to make that fact be clear. You do need to be 18 to join by yourself, but you can attend even if you're a child, so as long as you're with an adult. They offer daily lunches, so if anybody would like to go in for the community affiliation of other neighbors to go down and share a lunch down there, it's pretty amazing what you get for $6 fee. I don't know where else you can buy an entire complete meal for $6 today. They also do the Meals on Wheels program and that's open to everybody, whether you just want to have lunch delivered or if you are having knee surgery or something like that or you can't make it out of your house, you can have lunch delivered. So, keep that in mind, it's for everyone, it's not just if you are handicapped or having a problem that needs to be helped, it's even if you just want to have lunch delivered, you can sign up for that program. So, I just wanted to let you know, they have a lot of different programs there, everything from pottery to dance classes to bingo, they have a thrift center, they have so many things that they offer and I just thought maybe everybody might want to take the opportunity to get to know the CASA Senior Center. It's located on Spouse and Mansonita down on that way, it's a one-way road, once you get back in there, it's a little confusing, but currently there's only about 1,500 to 2,000 people, I believe, that are members and so I think we can grow that with a town of 50,000. I'd love to see everybody come down and see what they have to offer and I know the bingo is one of the highest payouts, so it's pretty awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hepperaly?
I first would like to echo Councilmember Greer's sentiment regarding staff's tireless efforts, not just in Winter Spectacular, but the four huge events that we had this year and are starting again in the spring, so get ready, Extravaganza, Red, White &amp; Boom, Harvest Fest, and Winter Spectacular. Prescott Valley has the hardest-working staff in the state and I appreciate every single one of them, top to bottom, you guys are amazing and I appreciate you and keep up the good work. And we, I think, was it, four of us attended the groundbreaking for Agapeville 2, which is the Prescott Valley extension of Agape House, they're currently in Prescott, is transitional housing for most of the time women who are getting out of domestic violence situations and have children and need somewhere to go for a short period of time to get back on their feet, get a job and find permanent residence and so we are proud to host six, six future units of Agape House here in Prescott Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Leyva?
I just want to take a minute to wish everyone Merry Christmas, obviously, because it's the season to celebrate and obviously to thank our town for such a wonderful job with all the events for the season and keep up the good work.
Thank you. Just, you can clap. Okay, I just want to give a big shout-out to CNC Cyclery, Carmen Hines and her husband and their store is located at 8500 East Arizona 69 here in Prescott Valley. Casey and Carmen Hines are donating 19 bikes to children at the Boys and Girls Club in Prescott Valley, bikes and helmets. And so, if you, if you're in the market to buy a bike, we have two great bike shops in town and CNC Cyclery is one of them. And staying with my Boys and Girls Club theme here, we, my husband and I got a really nice "thank you so much" card, Christmas card from the Boys and Girls Club and the quote here from John Ship says, "Every child is one caring adult away from a success story." So, keep that in mind. Give littles eye contact, even if you don't know them when you're in the store. Gilbert, I've asked you to comment on a couple of things that came up during our comments and this is your time to give us an update.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the council. So, I'll take those, the two, as we've heard concern about two items tonight, one is about the sand and gravel operation, the applicant for that project has asked for a pause, they've not given a determination of when they will come back to the town to resume that, so we will be working with the public and the applicant on that project in the future. And the observatory was also mentioned, the observatory has not filed anything with the town at this point, they've had conversations with the town, they've given us preliminary types of things, but they've actually not started that development process. So, we will certainly let the public know if there is activity being brought forward on that, but at this point, there is nothing before the town as it relates to those two projects. The monthly report for November is available on our website and for those that are here in the community, we do a compilation of all, whole bunch of statistics and data from all of our different departments and activities across the organization. So, if you want to have a good insight into some of the things that's taking place within Prescott Valley, the monthly report on our website is available. The town offices will be closed for Christmas on December 25th and also on the 26th, so we will resume full operations on Wednesday, the 27th. And then, this is hopefully our last night in these chambers, we will be moving back to the council's main chambers beginning January 11th. So, there's not a planned study session for the first part of January since it's right after New Year, but we will have our regular meeting on January 11th back in the main council chambers in the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is number six in its consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items, if discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Would anybody like to remove any of the consent items or make a motion?
So, at this point, do you want us to make a motion to approve?
I thought you wanted to pull 6-0.
I thought we already had done that. Okay, I would like to pull 6-0 and make it 8H on our agenda.
And with that, would you like to make a motion?
Sure.
Okay.
To approve the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion to approve all items listed under the consent agenda by electronic vote.
All second? All in favor? Oh, sorry. Push your green dots or red dots or whatever dots you want, right? Okay, there we go. Thank you.
That passes.
Okay, thank you. So, we are moving 6-0 to 8H. Thank you, Councilwoman Dickinson. 7A, Old Business Noise Code Amendments: Consideration and Possible Actions, Second Reading, Lieutenant Hayes.
Evening, Council, I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Is there any questions for Lieutenant Hayes? Hearing none, shall this ordinance pass?
I'm going to go ahead and read the ordinance.
Yes, please.
Ordinance number 2023-931, an ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending section 10-01-070 noise in Article 10-01 offenses and Chapter 10 offenses of the town code to provide for measurement of noise levels within the town and to establish noise level maximums as a means to regulate and eliminate excessive, unnecessary, and annoying noises. and annoying noises, providing that all of their chapters, articles, and sections of the Town Code, not here and repealed or amended, shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provisions shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law. Thank you.
Council, shall this ordinance pass?
That passes.
Thank you, thank you, Lieutenant.
Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Okay, now we are to 8A, which is Prescott Valley Audit and Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, Fiscal Year 2022-23, Consider and Possible Action, Ms. Pell.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members. Every year, we bring this item before you. We go through an external audit process with Heinfeld and Meach. And Michael Lazon is here to report on that audit and our financial statement.
Mr. Lazon, welcome.
Thank you for having me. Thank you to the mayor, who's not here unfortunately, but the vice mayor and the rest of the council for having me here tonight. My name is Michael Lazon. We are the, I'm with Heinfeld Meach. We're the independent auditors hired by the town to perform a whole lot of services, including the financial audit, single audit, seven CFD audits, the Highway User Fund Revenue Report, Expenditure Limitation Report, Glasser Hill Agreed Upon Procedure, and the Entertainment Center Agreed Upon Procedure as well. And so I really want to thank Katie Pell, Irina Omerkova, and the whole finance staff, along with any of the departments that we work with. We kind of have a lot of questions for a lot of different departments, and we appreciate everyone's help in getting the audit done. We're responsible for three pages of this 140-page report, and they do all the rest. So we do appreciate their hard work. And so I'll kind of get to the results. If there's any questions, please let me know. So the financial audit is essentially, what we're required to do is give an opinion on the financial statements, whether they are materially correct, free from misstatement due to error or fraud. And the good news there is that the town receives what's called an unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion we can give, not a statement of perfection. The audit is not designed to catch every mistake, to catch fraud. It's designed to look at the numbers in total and determine if they're materially correct. And we can say with certainty that that is true. The second part of the primary audit we're required to do is regarding the single audit. So because the town receives and expends more than $750,000 in federal awards, we're required to have this additional audit. And so the program that was tested for fiscal '23 was the Coronavirus Relief Fund. And so the good news is there is, again, the town receives what's called an unmodified opinion on compliance with federal requirements. The federal government puts out a list of requirements every year that the auditors are required to look at and say, was this money spent appropriately? Is it being tracked appropriately? All of that. And the good news is, again, we can say that that was done correctly. And again, with the seven CFDs, all of those receive unmodified audit opinions as well. And we had no significant findings that were required to be reported to either the state or to the federal government. So kind of good news all around.
Thank you, sir. If that concludes your comments, I will ask council if they have any questions.
I have no comments or no questions. I have a comment. Job well done, Katie. I know that the CARES Act money went to not only our Yavalein vans, but it also went to enhancing the exterior portions of a number of our businesses in town. And I know a lot of people benefited from that. And just her guidance and direction and her professionalism and her skills and talents, we are very, very blessed to have had Katie during this last three, four years that I've been here. And I've learned a lot from her. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Okay, any other questions? No. So I think Councilwoman Dickinson started something here that we should all have a chance to chime in on. And that is, this will be Katie Pell's last meeting. And so I just want to say that you are a shining star, and you have carried us so far to this town, winning multiple awards and recognitions. And you're moving on to greener pastures, closer to home, and we wish you great success.
Thank you.
And I don't know, council?
Well, being the newest council member, I was very impressed with everything that you showed us since day one. And you definitely are an asset for anywhere you're going to go because of your talent. So thank you so much for everything that you've done for us here.
Thank you.
You are amazing. And not, I mean, just managing the town, even if you had a, you know, kind of starting from scratch. But you didn't, you didn't have the luxury of starting from scratch. You kind of had to dig deep and find a lot of stuff that maybe needed to be fixed or done better. And you have just really, it's been a challenge. And you have been up to the task every step of the way. And we are definitely going to be at a new deficit without you. But we wish you the best of luck in the future.
Councilwoman Schumacher.
And I know Lucy said she's the newest. I want to say I'm the oldest, but I just want to say longest-serving of this council. And I want to thank you, Katie, for always making it exciting to attend a budget meeting. You've always made everything so clear and concise and understandable. And I just truly appreciate that, because when you come into this position, it's a burden on your shoulders when you're thinking you're using public funds, that you're using some, you know, not your money, or I would, it would be an easy decision on a lot of things. But you've made it clear and understandable as to what the goal is and how we're going to achieve it. And I just truly appreciate all your hard work for that. And I've enjoyed working with you for five years. And I understand you have baby goats, and I hope they have jellies. So thank you so much, Katie.
What do you think?
I've said quite a bit, but I just want to add, I know that you're, as Lori said, you're going to be closer to home and with your family and that it's going to be a change for you, a change for us. But I hope you won't stay a stranger. I hope that we will continue to see you time and time again. God bless you.
Yes, I haven't known you very long, but I've been so impressed with your work and the fact that you do it with such calm grace. I just appreciate that. And I, for one, will miss you, but I know that you're going on to something that'll make you a happier life. So congratulations and Merry Christmas.
Thank you all for your very kind words. It's been a pleasure working with all of you.
Thank you. We'll miss you. So can I have a motion on? Yeah, you can clap for that. We love you, Katie. Okay, so if there's no other questions on 8A, can I please get a motion?
I would like to make a motion to accept and adopt the ACFR as presented by Heinfeld Meach and Company, TC, by electronic vote.
I second it.
That passes.
Thank you. Okay, next, we are on to 8B, and that is Revised Wastewater and Water and Add Stormwater Rates, Consider and Possible Action. Mr. Wadsworth, and maybe, I don't know if you caught some of her comments or questions that you can maybe work that into your presentation.
Yes, yes. Good evening, Vice Mayor and council. So tonight, you're here to consider water rate increases and changes, public hearing. And we've been before you numerous times talking about different options. The public reports were put on the town's website as meeting the requirements of state law. And so tonight will be, you know, your chance to make a decision on this. We have Dan Jackson with us tonight from Willdan Financial Services. And he is the one who has prepared these reports and done all the analyses. He will go through his presentation to inform you as far as what, you know, what the option is and the guidance we've received from you. And then after that, we can, you know, address any questions and so forth. So I'll turn it over to Dan at this point.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be back before you all tonight on a subject matter that obviously is very controversial and very concerning for all cities in Arizona. As a water rate consultant, I've done work, similar rate studies for about 40 cities here in the state of Arizona. And for almost every city, I've delivered the same message. And that is that the cost of water service is simply going up all over the United States. It's going up for a lot of reasons that are outside the control of a town or a city. And the challenge a city always faces whenever you look at water and wastewater rates is that you want to keep your rates as low as possible. That's obvious. However, you need to balance the desire to keep rates as low as possible with the need to fully fund your water and sewer operation to ensure that you provide the highest level of service to your ratepayers. And so therefore, the lowest rate is not always the best rate. I work for some cities that have incredibly low rates here in the state of Arizona. They have low rates because they don't put any money into their system. It's sort of like saying that I could save $100 by not changing the oil in my car. Well, you can do that, but a year later, your engine is going to blow out. So the properly-run city has to invest in the future of its water utility to ensure that you will continue to provide that high level of service. Now, when every city in Arizona does a, considers rates, they have to follow state guidelines. The state says that the first thing you have to do is do a study to examine the need for the increase. You did that. You then have to file what's called a notice of intent, where you start a statutory time clock to determine whether or not you are going to actually adopt a rate plan. You did that 60 days ago. Then you have to do a public hearing, and that is what we're doing here tonight. After this public hearing at that time, either tonight or any time after, you can decide, you know, whether or not you want to adopt the new long-term rate plan. So the purpose of tonight is to talk, is to provide a public hearing. I will hopefully, very briefly, go through some of the background charts and the proposed rate plan. And then I will open it up for questions. And obviously, if you have questions at any time, please feel free to ask. I want to start by talking a little bit about what's going on here in the town of Prescott Valley. The town has managed to go since the year 2017 without a rate adjustment. As somebody who's done this a lot, that's pretty extraordinary. Most cities here in Arizona and across the United States raise their rates every year. The average water and sewer utility is raising its rates 5% to 6% every year. So the fact that you've gone six years without a rate adjustment, I think is pretty extraordinary. And I think it shows a commitment to try to keep rates as low as possible. However, you cannot repeal the laws of economics. Costs are continuing to go up, particularly because inflation has been higher. You try to run your water and sewer operation like a business. And like any business, your costs go up. Heck, cost of everything goes up 3% to 4% a year just due to inflation. And so as those costs go up, you have no choice but to pass those costs through to your ultimate ratepayers. In addition, you see the need right now to fund in the water and sewer operation approximately $55 million in capital repairs and improvements over the next decade. Again, it costs millions of dollars to build and operate, maintain, repair, and expand a water and wastewater system. But these expenditures are necessary to ensure that that water is going to be there when people need it. So the combination of low rates, increasing inflation, and the need to invest in the future is what is resulting in the need for you to consider a new long-term financial plan. Now, one question people often ask in public hearings like this is, what do we pay for water service and how does it compare to our neighbors? Well, this chart right here is intended to answer that question. The average residential ratepayer here in the town of Prescott Valley uses about 5,000 gallons of water and sewer service a month. Now, that's an average. That means that some people use less, and some people use more, and some people use a lot more. But the average ratepayer uses about 5,000 gallons. For 5,000 gallons, that customer currently pays $62.82 a month for that service. Now, that doesn't include taxes or garbage or some of the other things that are typically put on a utility bill. It's just basic water and sewer service. As you can see, your rates compare very favorably to other similar cities here in the state of Arizona. You are a little higher than large cities like Phoenix and Tempe, but you're significantly lower than cities like Yuma, Morana, Camp Verde, Chino Valley. You're way lower than Prescott, and you're half what Sedona pays. So the idea of this chart is not to provide justification for a rate increase. It is meant to answer the question, are our ratepayers disproportionately burdened financially by water and sewer rates here in the town? The answer is obviously, no, you're not. Okay, just a little bit of background. You have about 23,454 water accounts. To no great surprise, the vast majority of them are 5/8-inch meters. That is a typical residential and small-business meter. You do have some larger meters, of course, and you have about 20,000 wastewater accounts. We have developed a long-term financial plan. That's part of the study that we did. And the study assumed that you would grow at the rate of about 500 to 600 new accounts per year. Remember, a rate, a financial plan is not a guarantee. It's a prediction based on a series of reasonable assumptions. And growth has been built into the assumptions that we've used for this study. Also, in the current year, you sold about 1.8 billion gallons of water. That's how much water has been consumed. Now, water usage kind of goes up and down a little bit from year to year, and a lot of that's due to weather. Obviously, if it's a hot summer, you're going to sell more water. If it's a cooler summer, you're going to sell a little bit less. But as you can see, we're projecting that water usage is going to steadily increase over the next decade. This chart right here is just a chart that shows what your current and future cost of providing water and sewer services. The bar chart is broken down into three elements. The blue portion of it is operating costs, personnel, chemicals, electricity, those kind of things. As you can see, it's going to slowly increase over the years. I mean, obviously, the cost of everything goes up, so that's going to go up as well. The green portion is your capital outlays. Those are small-ticket capital expenditures. And the purple portion is debt service on the debt that you're going to have to issue to fund your long-term capital improvements. As I said at the beginning of this presentation, on the water and sewer side, the town is expected to incur approximately $55 million in capital improvements in the next five years alone in the water and sewer system. This is not out of proportion to what I see, water and sewer utilities, particularly ones the size of the town of Prescott Valley incurring. It costs millions of dollars to build a system that will push water through a town as complex and as large as this. And since it costs millions of dollars to build it, it costs millions of dollars to maintain it as well. So, as I said, we've got operating costs going up. We've got capital improvement needs. So for that reason, we have, we are recommending that the town implement a five-year water and wastewater rate plan. This recommendation was done after numerous meetings with staff. We've had several briefing sessions before the council as well. And so this multi-year rate plan, the purpose of it is to gradually implement a new rate plan that will get you the revenue you need while minimizing the impact on your customers. At the same time, we're recommending a couple of changes in your rate plan. We're recommending that you implement an increased conservation motive for your rate plan. Conservation is one of the key goals that every water utility has to implement in the next decade. Water is a precious and diminishing resource. We want water to be available, but we want to provide a financial disincentive for people to use excessive amounts of that. So what that means is that you're going to, right now, you have a rate plan that the more you use, the more you pay. And so we're recommending getting more aggressive on that rate plan to provide that financial disincentive. At the same time, we're recommending that you implement over a 10-year period something known as meter equivalencies. If you have a 6-inch meter, that's the equivalent of several hundred 5/8-inch meters in terms of how much demand it exerts from your system. And so we recommend that you put in a minimum charge that reflects the fact that those larger meters have a much greater demand on your system and have a much greater cost of providing service to. And so finally, we're going to recommend that for the residential 5/8-inch meters, you have three volume tiers, 0 to 5,000 gallons, 5,000 to 15,000, and 15,000 and above. Why do we have these three tiers? Well, as I said, the average usage is 5,000 gallons. So what that means is that anybody who uses up to the average amount of water in the town pays the lowest rate. Only when you use above the average do you begin paying more. And that is what is typically known as discretionary water usage. When you go from 0 to 5,000 gallons, you're using water inside your house, drinking, bathing, that kind of thing. But when you get above 5,000 gallons, you're starting to use more discretionary. outdoor water usage. We want that water to be available, but we want it to come at a cost that is going to make people kind of think twice and be more prudent in how they use their water. So first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to show you the rates themselves. Then I'm going to show you the more important chart, and that is what the impact is going to be on rate payers. This chart right here shows the rate plan and the projected increases over each of the next five years. As you can see, for the five-eighth-inch meters, the current minimum charge is nine dollars, and it is higher for the larger meters, but not really that much higher. We recommend that the minimum charge go up by about fifty cents in twenty-four, from nine dollars to nine fifty-four, and then about twenty to twenty-five cents a month each year after that. But we also see, as you can see, the larger meters, they are starting to get larger, the minimum charge, to be more in line with what it is costing you to provide that service. On the volumetric rate, you can see that each of the three rate blocks go up for each of the next five years, but Blocks Two and Blocks Three go up at a higher rate to provide that additional incentive. On the wastewater side, you see the minimum charge going up about twenty-five cents a month each year for the next five years, and the volumetric rate going up as well. Now, what does this mean in terms of what people pay? Well, this is one of the most important charts in the presentation, because this tells you what the impact is going to be on an average rate payer. Let's go back to the average residential rate payer who uses five thousand gallons of water and sewer service a month. What that means is, right now, they pay fifty-two dollars and eighty-two cents. Under this plan, the monthly bill in the first year would go up by two dollars and sixty-one cents a month. For those of you who like percentages, it's about a four-point-nine percent increase. In subsequent years, we're only talking about a dollar to a dollar and a half a month. So somebody who pays fifty-two dollars and eighty-two cents today would pay about sixty dollars five years from now, which is still going to be one of the lowest rates in the area. Now, if you're a larger user, a fifteen-thousand-gallon user, your increase is going to be higher in the first year. You pay eighty-eight dollars right now, your bill would go up to a hundred and one dollars in January of 2024. That's the impact of the conservation rate. And as you can see, the impacts are higher in each of the subsequent years because we are trying to implement a greater incentive for people to conserve water. On the commercial side, the increase is about five to six percent a year, each year for the next five years. So I hate to take these very complex financial plans and try to summarize it in terms of one or two numbers. I don't like to do that, but if I did, I would tell you all that for the vast majority of rate payers, the impact of this plan is about two to three dollars a month in the first year, and about one to two dollars a month each year after that. And what does it get you? It gets you a healthy utility financially and the ability to invest about fifty-five million dollars in the future of your town's water system. One final thing, you also have what's known as hydrant meters. A hydrant meter is a temporary source of water, and it's for users that do not pay water capacity or resource fees. It's just used temporarily, mostly for builders. These meters are very expensive because it requires a lot of meter, a lot of labor. You've got to move them around. And so right now, you're only charging twenty-four dollars a month for them. We recommend making that equivalent to a four-inch meter, because that's about what the size of a hydrant meter is. So we would recommend phasing that in over five years. It's twenty-four dollars right now. It would be three hundred and sixty dollars a month by 2028. Now, yes, that's a big increase, but twenty-four dollars is a very, very low charge to be charging for a meter of that size right now. Okay, we've talked about water and sewer. Let's talk about your drainage fees as well. I don't want to get into a whole lot of detail on this because we've talked about this before, but when a town implements a drainage fee, it does it in two ways. It does it for residential customers, and it does it for non-residential customers. For a residential customer, a city typically does just a flat fee: two dollars a month, three dollars a month, five dollars a month, whatever the amount is. And it's for every residence, because most residences are approximately the same size. But for commercial businesses, it's kind of a different ballgame, because stormwater is based on something called impervious surface area. You think about it. It rains, okay? If you're a big Walmart with a big parking lot, you're going to get a lot of runoff on that rain. You're going to get a lot of stormwater, because you've got this big parking lot, you've got this big building. And so that's a commercial business. Well, a mom-and-pop flower shop is a commercial business too. So you shouldn't charge the same amount to Walmart as you do to a mom-and-pop flower shop. So what you do is, you determine how much impervious surface area is being generated by each commercial customer, and that's what the town did. Town staff deserves a lot of credit for a lot of effort they put into looking at maps and determining what, for every single commercial customer, how much impervious surface area that customer had. This chart right here shows that for your commercial customers, you know, about half of them have twenty-five hundred square feet or less of impervious surface area. You don't have that many that are real large, that are over ten thousand square feet, but you do have some, and they are going to pay a proportionately higher fee under the proposed stormwater fee. Now, of course, we're recommending a long-term stormwater fee plan too, and that is based on a series of assumptions about future costs and future growth. Future growth is going to, obviously, is going to be similar to water and sewer, because stormwater is based on water accounts. You are incurring significant fees for stormwater, or costs for stormwater right now, personnel, operating, that kind of thing, and that's going to continue to go up in the current years. But also, like water and sewer, there are going to be capital expenditures required for stormwater. And I know that this is something that was brought up a little bit earlier in the comments section. When the study was done, it was done with the understanding that the town was in the process of doing a comprehensive master plan for your stormwater drainage utility. That master plan is still under review. It's still in progress, and it's not going to be done for a while yet. And we started this study a long time ago. And so town really had two choices. One was to just kind of put everything aside until the master plan was done, in which case you'd lose a couple of years of the ability to collect fees to recover your stormwater costs. Or the second option was to provide an estimate of what you think your costs are going to be. And so we met with your town staff. We spent a lot of time talking with them about it, and we came up with a basic estimate of what you think your capital stormwater costs are going to be. And it's going to be about forty million dollars over the next ten years. Now, it may be a little more, it may be a little less, but it's going to be somewhere around that amount. And so for that reason, since we know approximately what the number is going to be, we recommend that you go ahead and set a fee that will recover that amount. Now, if it comes out, if the master plan comes out and says, nah, you only need fifteen million, then you always have the ability to come back in and adjust your fee accordingly. I don't think that's going to happen. I would bet that it won't. But if it does, you always have the ability to come back in and revise it. But the forty million dollars represents our estimates and staff's best estimates of what you think the capital projects are going to be at this time. So to no great surprise, you don't have forty million dollars. You're going to have to issue a lot of debt for stormwater too in order to fund those costs. This chart right here shows that right now, you're incurring about five to six hundred thousand dollars a year in stormwater costs, and that amount is expected to balloon up to almost three million dollars a year by the year 2032. So like water and sewer, we're going to recommend that you implement a five-year stormwater plan. You set an initial residential stormwater fee of three dollars per month per account, with that fee going up by fifty cents in 2025 to three fifty, to four dollars in 2026, and five dollars in 2027. On the commercial side, we recommend setting a fee based on how much impervious surface area you have. As you can see, we would phase that fee in over a three- to five-year period. If you're a small commercial business, you'd pay the same amount as the residential. But if you're a larger business, you would pay proportionally higher stormwater fee. So just like water and sewer, it would be a five-year plan. So there aren't that many cities here in Arizona that have stormwater fees right now, but they are becoming very, very popular. In the Dallas-Fort Worth area where I live, stormwater fees are prevalent everywhere. And as cities develop, you're going to see many, many more cities here in Arizona adopt a stormwater fee in the next decade. This is just a comparison of the cities that we could identify that have it. A three-dollar fee right now is right about in line with what the cities here in Arizona that are charging stormwater fees charge. And even the five-dollar fee five years from now is still going to be fairly well in line with what these other cities charge, assuming, and this is a big assumption, that they don't increase their stormwater fees as well. So you'll be happy to know I'm to my very last slide. I just really want to emphasize a couple of very important things. Nobody ever wants to see any increases. I mean, nobody ever wants to pay more for anything at any time for any reason. And as somebody who's been doing this for thirty years, I can tell you that I have never given a public presentation on rate increases where I've had people come up to me afterwards and say, thank you very much for raising my rates. I really appreciate it. They don't say that, but I have had a lot of people say, I don't like it, but I understand why it needs to be done, and I understand that it's an investment in the future of the community. We want good service. We want to pass down to future generations a water, sewer, and stormwater system that is in as good a shape as the one we inherited. It's never an easy thing to do to raise rates, but this rate plan, both water, sewer, and stormwater, will achieve those objectives. It'll ensure that you remain financially healthy. It will ensure that your utilities operate on a standalone basis and that you will not need general fund support. Thirty to forty percent of utilities in the United States charge rates that do not cover their costs, which means that for thirty to forty percent of cities, their general fund is subsidizing their water rates. You are not doing that. You have never done that, and this plan will ensure that you don't never have to do that. All you're asking your rate payers to do is pay what it's costing you to provide that service, and you're not making a profit on this. You're just covering your costs. And probably most importantly, all these costs go right back into the city. The fifty-five million dollars of water and sewer improvements are for assets that you will use and future generations of residents will use as well. And finally, you will do this with water and sewer rates that will remain at or below that of most of your competitors and most of your neighboring cities. I strongly recommend that you implement both rate plans tonight. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have this time.
Okay, questions for Mr. Jackson. What, no, sorry, sir. I'm asking the council.
Vice Mayor, you probably opened the public hearing and then questioned.
I'm opening the public hearing. No, questions from council?
No questions.
I don't have questions per se, but I want to say thank you for your presentation, because I think you answered so many questions here tonight, and I truly appreciate how you have put it in perspective for everybody. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
For that, I want to give you the nomination.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have no questions.
Thank you.
I would like to, for the record, say that we did receive an email from Melissa Barcelona, which staff has looked at. And I also want to say that, Mr. Schumacher, if you have further questions, they can talk to you afterwards. But you're welcome to speak here again, because the public hearing is open, and then if you have questions too, you can come up and ask him. So the public hearing's open. If anybody... Yes. You need to come to the podium and speak in the microphone, please. Oh, sorry about that. Mr. Olivas.
Sir, we have some of the backgrounds on Liker's speech. I'd like to know one thing that...
Mr. Olivas, closer to the microphone, please.
A lot of the retirees here, the population's about forty percent. Social Security only went up three-point-two percent. So you're putting us more in the hole. You're not charging much, but it's still hurting us in gasoline and food. This is a bad time to ask for a rate hike, okay? I understand I designed and built four or five of your water and clean and purification systems: City of Young, City of Peoria, Sun City, and Scottsdale. Okay? I know the cost, how it escalates. An eighty-inch pipe, stainless steel, eighty-six, with a motor operator. You lock in the prices for three or four days, the next day it goes up two, three percent. Okay? Concrete, rebar, all that is a hard, stable price to hold. Okay? What you're saying is correct. We have to plan for the future. Right now, they have not done so, and we're in trouble. Okay? We need a water reclaim system. I need to go and monitor what we have now, how we're receiving the water, raw sewage, how we're skimming it, how we're cleaning it, filtering, and how we're polishing the water to get rid of bad chemicals. I've not seen it. I don't see that out there. And I make an assessment and concur with you. Okay? What engineering group are you?
I'm an engineer and a financial consultant.
So, Mr. Olivas, you need to talk to us.
Yeah, financial consultant, ouch. Okay. Every time I get into one of these projects, I need one of these guys. Oh, and an accountant also. Now, we have, he estimated twenty-four thousand, I estimated twenty-five thousand water meters. He talked about water conservation. That's a very important thing here in the state of Arizona. We can't stop growth, but we can control it till we're ready for it. Now, on the water meters, you guys charge us per thousand gallons. That's incorrect. You have to charge us what the meter, I know your system. Your mechanical meter reads to the tenths of a gallon. Your software in town, I've seen it, it reads the same way, yet you charge it per thousand gallons. What we have to do is educate the citizens how to conserve water, and that is by doing a drop test at least two or three times a year over their homes. A drop test, you shut everything down in your home, and you open up the capimeter, and you see if it moves in an hour. If it moves in an hour, you've got a leak. The water could go to the foundation, crack your foundation, lean your house over, cause damage in roads, small sinkholes. Okay? If you build correctly, we're able to do the drop test and able to conserve water that way.
Okay, Mr. Olivas, you need to wrap up.
Okay.
But Mr. Jackson's going to be here. You can talk to him afterwards.
Right. Am I right in that on that?
Thank you.
To conserve water.
Thank you, Mr. Olivas.
There are a lot of ways to conserve water.
Yes.
Mr. Olivas, thank you.
Right.
Okay, next. And I missed her name, I'm sorry.
So I had questions about the first water rate adjustment, which I'm actually, I'm cool with it. You know, things cost more, I get it. But for the five-thousand-gallon limit, will that be the bottom tier? Or if a household uses, let's say, a thousand, you know, snowbirds, sometimes they're not home, will it be a fixed rate for five thousand at a minimum, or are there tiers?
There are tiers. You charge per thousand gallons.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. That's all I had. Okay. And then for the second part, the drainage, it's easier to say, ask for money now, and we'll figure out how to use it later. When you're talking about a master plan that has so much information go into it and hasn't been approved, and then to say to citizens who are paying for it that, we'll collect your money now for services that we'll decide on later, I think that's asking a lot. Like I said, there's not enough information. I think they will in time be able to compile that information, but until that information's made available, how can you rightfully tell the people that we will collect your money now and we'll tell you how we spend it later? I'm sure, you know, you're right about it coming out to a certain amount. Does that make sense? That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying don't approve. I'm just saying there's not enough information at this point. You know, the study, the difference between your rate increase study at one-hundred-and-fifty-seven pages and then fifty-seven pages for your drainage study saying that, you know, it's becoming popular. Well, you know, it's trending to charge your citizens a fee for a master plan that hasn't been approved. I think that's asking a lot. I think that's, it would be auspicious to proceed as if, is all I'm saying.
Thank you for your information. And I want to refer you, we had a very detailed study session on the drainage plan today at three-thirty, so you can go back and watch that, four o'clock, four o'clock. You can go back and watch that drainage study. And we're not allowed to charge more than what we need to fix the system. So if, when that study's done, and I think, Ms. Ruder, you said nine months?
Nine months.
And we find out that we're charging too much, we're mandated to come back and adjust those fees.
Okay. I do have a separate question. So historically, the town fund has been paying for drain water management. Why is it that it can't continue with, you know, the mayor mentioned that, you know, the town fund's at the largest pool it's ever been, fifty-nine million dollars. Why is there now, you know... Why is there now, you know, why do you need more from a separate fund?
Vice Mayor, if I could to, and I think you have some really good questions. We are starting from scratch. And parallel to this, and the Vice Mayor mentioned that we are doing a comprehensive drainage master plan. But we, right now, what we've been doing in, in terms of our operations is we take our street staff, which is a very limited number of, of staff that we have, and they also have been doing all of the drainage work for the town. As, as any of you can guess, what happens when you overload staff and say, "Okay, you've got to not only maintain all the many miles of, of roads and do all the drainage, we, we compromise. We're not able to, to maintain everything at the level that our residents expect." So, this fee will, the way I would look at it is, there's a ramp-up component, so we will be hiring staff, dedicated drainage staff, that will be going around, working to improve all of our existing drainage ways. We have, we have millions of dollars of backlog of maintenance that, that needs to be done over the next number of years. So, this, the first part of this fee, the first several years, is really going to be just getting the maintenance program up and running. And then, as we finalize the drainage master plan, we, we already know that we've got a long list of different major drainage projects. We have to price those out, and that will all be part of, of the, you know, eventual funding for the, the drainage fee. So, this first part is just to get this program up and running, so we have more dedicated staff who are more responsive to the needs of our drainage system. So, you will, our residents will immediately begin to see improvements by having a dedicated crew who are going to be highly responsive to drainage issues throughout the community.
And is this for culverts not belonging to residential properties? It's my understanding that according to town code, culverts have to be cleaned out by the, the property owner. So, this is for outside of that realm.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Davidson. You, you, I, I really encourage you to watch the study session so you could see the degree of the need with regard to drainage. And then, you are welcome to come in. I would love to meet with you again. I know Mr. Davidson would meet with you. So, that's my recommendation to you.
Okay.
Thank you. And thank you for your comments. I appreciate them. Any other public, oh, yes, Ms. Winters. Winter.
Debbie Winter. I live in Quailwood Homeowners Development, and we have drainage issues. And I'm going to speak specifically to the drainage rate increase in my remarks. I want to speak in favor of the increase. I've attended presentations by West Engineering Consultants that are doing the master drainage study. And the results show that there are many and major drainage issues that need remediation in order to avoid future flooding issues or to fix current flooding issues. The current budget does not allow for sufficient funding of these projects. We have some of the lowest water rates in the state while living on some of the most flood, flood-prone land, and that includes Quailwood. We are surrounded by washes and by floodplains, and we already have erosion occurring. And according to West Engineering Consultants, we are not even in the top ten areas that need to be remediated in this town. Many of our development, developments are built on or are near floodplains. This is not the fault of our current town council or town manager. However, they've been left to fix the problems they've inherited. The only way they can do that is to raise the money needed through this increase. We don't get any income from property taxes and rely solely on sales taxes for revenues, and our sales tax rate is already high compared to some of the areas in the state. While none of us likes to deal with increased expenses, this is necessary to protect the homes and livelihoods of the residents of Prescott Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winter. Yes.
Patricia Betzel, three eight, three North Fairfax Road. So, we're talking about flooding, we're talking about floodplains, we're talking about costs. So, I'm going to bring up Lake Shore six fifty, which, Lake Shore itself is built on top of a wash. There's a giant ditch across, along the entire length of it, that you could drive a bulldozer around and couldn't see it from the road. That confluence meets with the Aguafrio River floodplain, which also meets right there at Lake Shore Drive when it crosses that area with the Coyote Springs floodplain. All of three of those supposedly are managed by FEMA. And twice a year, during the monsoons and during the springtime, that entire basin, which is, I took a wheel out there, it's approximately two thousand feet wide. The residents have photographs of that water going all the way up to the road, which is probably a good twenty feet it fills with water. Yet, we're standing here, waiting for a judgment call on Lake Shore six fifty of not only building in that entire area, but here we're talking about raising water rates, and the residents have been very vocal that if you build in that area, it will flood, because they're not going to do any construction north of that, where the water comes from. Who the heck knows what's going to happen when that water comes? Yet, we think it's a reasonable request from the FANS to allow them to construct there. You should take a look at the next big rain, and you'll see how much water is in there.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments related to the rate fees? Yes, Mr. Williams. We're, we're going to stick to the water rate fees.
You betcha.
Okay.
I heard you. I agree in part with Lilia. It's not that I'm against all rates going up, but Mr. Jackson just didn't explain what we get for fifty million bucks. Maybe it was in the tiny font that was stacked, you know, thirty rows high, and I need a comment, a copy, or maybe I need to look at the work-study video, and I'll do that. But I just don't see what we're getting for fifty mil. And he needs to be specific. Regarding stormwater, water runoff, and again, I'll look at the tape, but we're already addressing it in a big way. Look at the north slope of Glassford Hill. It's all dug up. It's going to channel all that water to lord knows where, but maybe that was addressed at four o'clock. So, I'm not, you know, I'm not hearing that the town isn't already addressing it, and, and I don't think Mr. Jackson did a good job of explaining, if we have all these parking lots, I mean, pick a few stores, Walmart, Fry's, where does it go? And again, maybe you talked about that at four o'clock, but where does it go? I mean, does it go to Mountain Valley Park? Is that our only pond system? Just a few questions.
Thank you. Any other questions before I close the public hearing? Yes, sir. Can you come to the podium, please?
When are the rate, rates supposed to start increasing? Is this something I should ask afterwards?
You, why don't you ask your questions? We'll have staff come up and answer them.
Okay.
Or you're welcome to talk to them afterwards, because Mr. Wadsworth is still here, too.
Okay, because as a district, we're going to have to start mimicking the rate increases. That was what I wanted to, you know, find out.
Okay. And I'm glad you were here. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Bring you back to council. Do we have any questions? No. Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign Resolution Number two zero two-three dash two-three-five-one, revising or adding certain utility rates, fees, and charges, including certain automatic annual increases in the town comprehensive fee schedule by electronic vote.
That passes. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to eight C, which is Community Development Block Grant. We have a very short presentation by Mr. Judy.
Okay, got the message. Very short.
Time's up.
So, this is a CDBG public hearing. Would you like to open the public hearing now or after the presentation?
I would like to open the public hearing now. Public hearing's open.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, there are three funding mechanisms for CDBG projects in Arizona. One is a regional account. That means we get funding every four years through NACOG and through the Arizona Department of Housing. It's funding we're pretty much guaranteed to receive as long as we come up with an eligible project. There's also a state special project round, which is an annual competitive round of funding for CDBG funds as well. There's also entitlement status. When cities reach a certain threshold in size, they're eligible to become an entitlement city, which means they get funds automatically every year, working directly with the HUD. The town is already eligible. We have deferred that status. We have discussed moving into that entitlement role, possibly next year, and moving that into our new Neighborhood Services Department with our director, Stephanie Robinson. So, here's to you, Mrs. Robinson. Sorry, she probably hasn't heard that before. But we are looking at possibly putting our budgeted grant position in Neighborhood Services to cover this. So, the use of CDBG funds, fifty-one percent of the persons who benefit must be low to moderate income, or the project must eliminate slum or blight, or the project must solve an urgent health hazard. So, the types of projects that you can use with CDBG funds include public infrastructure, community facilities, housing, public services, economic development. For the competitive round, the state special projects, there are some additional requirements. You have to complete the environmental review, submit that with your application, the design must be complete, and you can only submit one project. That's true for the regional account project as well. These are the prior CDBG grants that we've been awarded. On the left column are the state special projects totaling about two point eight million on the regional accounts, almost three million over the past several years. I'm going to go through these really quick to show you some before and after pictures. This is the loose multi, loose drive multi-use path before and after. This is the loose drive improvements. This is one of my favorite pictures. You may not be able to see it, but there's a father walking his young son along the edge of the curb, so we're able to remediate that. This is a path along Windsong Drive that we were able to complete. Additional improvements along Windsong Drive. We also used HIRF money to enhance that project. And you'll see, most of the projects that we've tried to accomplish with the CDBG funds are adding sidewalks close to our schools to provide better and safer access there. This was more improvements along Long Lake Drive, leading up to Bradshaw Mountain High School and Glassford Hill Middle School. The Boys and Girls Club was recipient of two grants. Actually, the town received the funds. The Boys and Girls Club building is a town-owned facility that we leased to the Boys and Girls Club. I believe we charged them a dollar a year, but they pay for half of the utilities. The first expansion, just over six hundred thousand in CDBG funds. That was matched by over eight hundred thousand in private funds that the Boys and Girls Club raised from the Fane family, the Massey Foundation, and the Phoenix Suns Charities. The remodel was again seven hundred sixty-two thousand in CDBG funds. The rest, we used ARPA funds to complete that project. Civic Drive connected some improvements. The apartment complex is up through to the A A E C High School across the street here. Cattle Track Drive, again, this is a sidewalk leading up to Coyote Springs Elementary School. The last one we completed was actually a, a Yabapai County CDBG award. The counties are allowed to pick three projects. They selected this as one of their projects. So, this was just finished this past year. With our next funding round, the regional account, we would like to propose to the council to continue the improvements of Cattle Track Drive. You can see the sidewalk just ends right about at Yucca, so about halfway along Cattle Track. We would like to continue that all the way down to, I believe that's Roundup, and then with a little jog over to, to Viewpoint to provide some connectivity there. For the state special project round, we would like to consider replacing the playground at Antelope Park with one that is ADA accessible, one that can serve kids with special needs better. A lot of what that includes is the soft rubber surfacing along the entire playground, which is very, very expensive. These are examples of some accessible-type playgrounds. And again, this is a competitive round, so we're not guaranteed to receive funding, but we can make an application. So, the next steps, the second public hearing will be held on January twenty-fifth, when you, you would actually select a project, pass the appropriate ordinances, and if there is any leverage funds needed, you would pass that commitment as well. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Judy. Is there any questions from the audience? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Questions from council? So, Mr. Judy, when we become an entitlement jurisdiction, will we still be able to apply for the state special projects?
Vice Mayor, no.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yes. It would be locked into that entitlement status, so the state, state special projects are for those entities that aren't entitlement cities or towns.
That's what I thought. Okay, so I am looking for a motion unless there's any other questions.
There's, there's no motion needed. This is just a public hearing.
No motion, just a public hearing tonight.
Correct.
Okay.
Kevin, did I forget anything?
Come back another time for the rest of it. Okay.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
You can sit down now, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Judy. Okay, we are now on to, we are now on to AD, Series Seven Liquor License Pizza Hut, consideration and possible action. Ms. Greenwood.
Evening. Did you want to open up the public?
I'm going to open the public hearing.
Teresa June Morris, agent, filed a new application for a Series Seven Beer and Wine Bar Liquor License on behalf of Pizza Hut Number three-three-six-five-six, located at seventy-four-thirty Pathway. Currently, Pizza Hut has an active Series Twelve Liquor License. The Arizona Department of Liquor Licensing Control permits applicants to have multiple stackable licenses at one location, including a Series Seven and Series Twelve Liquor License. A copy of the application was posted for twenty days on the front of the premise as required by Arizona law. No arguments in favor of or opposed to the issuance of the license were received. It is recommended Town Council recommend approval of the application to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licensing Control. Thank you.
Okay, the public hearing is open. Is there any comments on this application? No hearing, none? Close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments, questions for staff? No? Okay, I will look for a motion.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the Series Seven Liquor License application for Pizza Hut Number three-three-six-five-six, located at seventy-four-thirty Pathway to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control by electronic vote.
That passes. Okay, moving on to eight E, non-subdivision residential development water policy, policy condition and possible action. Mr. Wadsworth.
Good evening again, Vice Mayor and Counsel. So, tonight, we're going to talk about a new policy, the non-subdivision residential development water policy. Little bit of background. First of all, last month, Ivan Legler provided you with a detailed presentation on all of the different aspects that were contained in this proposed policy. And going back even further, we presented to you a lot of the different things that we're looking at doing related to water and how we're going to conserve water and what we need to do moving forward. We presented a lot of information on plans and studies and partnerships and policies. So, we're in this area of policies. So, we're down in this one. We've already brought to you recently the bulk water sales. We're work, we're doing the conservation rates, which is, again, helping us with our, with our water management. And so, tonight, we're talking about another very important one, which is the non-subdivision water policy. And so, after my presentation, if you have detailed questions about some of the more detailed stuff, Ivan Legler is here. He can answer those questions, and we do have his presentation here as well, but I'm not going to get into that. So, I'm going to give kind of more of a, a general layman's description of what we're doing. And so, as you know, we're exploring every, every avenue that we can to conserve water, reduce water, and preserve water for the future. As I mentioned, we previously adopted the bulk water sales policy and implementing the, the rate schedule and looking at stormwater recharge options to help get water back into the ocean for as much as we can. So, with subdivision, so the policy is going to talk about non-subdivision development, and so I'm going to compare that to subdivision development, which by law, new subdivisions cannot use groundwater, okay? They have to find existing water rights and buy them from somebody else, so that it's not new water rights, it's existing water rights. Or they have to find other sources of water, which... Or they have to find other sources of water, which could include town effluent, if they could find surface water rights somewhere that were in this area, and they could buy those and then do that, or extinguish irrigation rights and use those. And then they have to go to the Department of Water Resources with that, and the department analyzes all that, and if everything looks good to them, and they agree with the water rights, they will issue them a certificate of assured water supply. So that's all done at the state level, all right? So that's what a subdivision has to do. Non-subdivision residential, which could include apartments, mobile home facilities, the build-to-rent communities that we're seeing very popular now, don't have to go through that, in fact, they don't have to bring water at all. Essentially, that's a loophole in state law. So potentially, we could get these types of developments coming forward, and we may see that's the only type of development coming forward, and they could say, we don't have to bring water, we want to grow, approve our development. As the town, we're saying, look, you know, we've got a finite water supply up here, we can't do that, and so even though the state has not done it, we are moving forward and implementing a policy that says, as a non-subdivision development, you must meet the same criteria as a subdivision, and we are going to manage that policy until such time that the state may actually pass regulations then that would supersede what we are putting into place. So, what we're telling them is, if you're an apartment complex, well, you need to go buy water rights from somebody that has water rights in this area, or find another source of water, you can bring those water rights to the town, we will look at those, we will use the same spreadsheets that the Department of Water Resources uses to determine what quantity of water is needed for that development, and they will have to show us that they've got those water rights, or that alternative water supply. And if they can do that, then that is not an additional demand on the aquifer. If they had presented that same information to the Department of Water Resources, they would approve it, and that's what we're proposing to do as well. So, we don't know when the state is going to put new regulations out there, it may be a few months, it may be a few years before they can agree on what they think that law needs to look like, but we need to act now, we need to preserve our water for future generations of Prescott Valley. Actually, I think I've gone through this already, so I'm kind of not following my own presentation, but they need to acquire the same water rights, they need to show us what those are, we are going to analyze them using Department of Water Resources criteria, and so this will put the residential subdivisions and the non, or the subdivision residential and the non-subdivision residential basically on the same playing field, and it won't be giving them an advantage where they don't have to spend the type of money to acquire water rights. So, in a nutshell, that's it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Wasworth. Questions from council?
No questions.
Questions from council?
Madam Vice Mayor, could I just add something to that?
Absolutely.
You know, Neil has done such a great job, we've told him laughingly sometimes that we need to have him move his office upstairs to the legal department, I think you've cemented that, Neil, we'd like to have you there. He's done a great job of giving us an outline, and one thing we'd like to emphasize is that there's a great deal of study that has gone into our ordinance, we recognize that we're on some new ground, but we've reached out to people who do know about water, and who have given us some background and advice as to how we might approach this. We want you to also understand that we have some due process that is built into the ordinance, if anyone believes that the analysis that's been done is incorrect, they will have an appeal process. We also want to emphasize that we're beginning this process in 2023, so those developments that have already been approved do not have to meet this requirement, however, the ones that we have spoken with and that we're negotiating with now will have to meet that requirement. Even though we've not yet adopted this policy, we believed we could apply the policy prior to this action, so I just wanted to let you know that all of the things that we've been looking at in 2023 will be required to meet this policy.
So, Mr. Legler, we received a letter dated December 14th, 2023, from Mr. Lally, an attorney on behalf of Fane Signature Group, asking us to delay this process so that they may be able to dialogue with us. How long have we been talking about this process?
You know, a lot of credit needs to go to Gilbert Davidson, because Gilbert's been talking about something like this for probably two years, and so this has been developed over a long period of time. The staff did the study back in December of 2022, and we raised it with the council in our study session in April, when we took all of the proposed policies for our water goals, and one of them was, in fact, this policy, as well as the bulk water policy, and some of the other things that we will be doing in the future.
So the other part of the letter, and I just want you to confirm this, it says that the town has not hosted, has not published the draft ordinance for public comment prior to the town council agenda?
Of course, the ordinance was there in the packet back in November, when we discussed this in our last study session. We've certainly sent it around, I believe many people have gotten copies, we believe that it is something that has been available for people to see.
And we have posted it per state requirements?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I could add, I mean, we have reached out to specific entities in the state, so I have spoken and communicated with the, and I don't know the exact acronym for it, but the Rental Association of Arizona, so they represent all developers that do rental projects. They had a copy of our draft ordinance and have not provided any opposition to it, and understood that local communities have to start implementing things like this. We will be, I think, probably one of the first cities in Arizona, the director of the State Department of Water Resources is fully aware of this policy, and we've also communicated with members of our legislative delegation, they are fully aware of the steps that we have taken.
Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Davidson. Unless there's any other questions of Mr. Wasworth, I'm looking for a motion.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to read ordinance number 2023-930 by title only on two separate occasions, then place the same on final passage by electronic vote.
Motion passed, ordinance number 2023-930, an ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, enacting a new section 14-02-080, non-subdivision residential developments in Article 14-02, planning procedures and requirements in Chapter 14, subdivisions of the town code, to formalize a policy of requiring non-subdivision residential developments that do not otherwise require issuance of certificates of assured water supply, C A W S, by the Arizona Department of Water Resources, A D W R, under applicable state law and regulations, to pledge to the town sufficient rights to renewable or imported water supplies, as would otherwise have been sufficient for A D W R to issue a C A W S in the Prescott Active Management Area. As a condition precedent for the town to issue any required approvals, providing that all of our chapters, articles, and sections of the town code, not herein and enacted or amended, shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected, but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. I heard somebody clap, this is landmark for us in our state, so if you guys want to clap for this, I'm going to give you time for that. Thank you. Okay, item 8 F is Z O A 23-004, amendments, town code, Chapter 13, community residents, consider and possible actions, Mr. Ruby.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Council. Back in August, August the 10th of this year, to be exact, and I apologize, I believe your staff report said October 10th, should have been August the 10th. So anyway, back in August of this year, the council received input from a number of citizens in the call to public expressing concern about traffic from concentration of rehabilitation homes in the area, and the public requested that the council adopt regulations similar to the city of Prescott. Staff has consulted outside legal counsel with a history and a specialty in regulations for permitting these rehab homes in compliance with the framework set forth by federal law that otherwise permits such facilities in residential areas. In particular, the Fair Housing Act provides protections for persons with disabilities, but the act does not preempt local jurisdictions or zoning laws, or preclude the adoption, amendment, or enforcement of zoning regulations pursuant to our local police powers, as long as those zoning regulations are consistent with the Fair Housing Act. The state of Arizona licenses these rehabilitation community residences for people with disabilities, including certain residential addiction treatment facilities. State licensing necessitates involvement by local jurisdictions in determining life safety code compliance for such residences. It is noted that clustering of these communities, of community residents in residential neighborhoods may undermine the ability of their residents to achieve normalization and community integration, these two essential purposes of these forms for housing for people with disabilities. Reasonable separation requirements may therefore be enacted to ensure clustering will not interfere with the community integration of the community residences. So with that being said, let's talk about what we're looking to do with the amendment to the Chapter 13 code. Two things, one is to replace group homes with the community residences, and number two is to redefine family, and by doing that, again, this is the date that the residents came forward, this is our legal consultation under the Fair Housing Act, and the Arizona licenses for these types of residences. So, two things, the first is family, and the definition of family, and that should have been in your packet, and it would have been item number 85, where we're redefining that family definition. So historically, P V Prescott Valley has had a very broad definition, and to be consistent with other Arizona jurisdictions, including the city of Prescott, it's proposed that the town definition of family be narrowed to only include four unrelated occupants. And there's a couple provisos in that, number one, any number of people related by blood, marriage, adoption, guardianship, or other duly and legally authorized custodial relationships, and no more than two unrelated individuals who provide care or assistance, or are domestic employees. And then the two unrelated individuals with children related to either of them and their foster children, children, or up to four unrelated individuals. One thing that the family does not include under our definition, does not include society, nursing homes, clubs, boarding or lodging homes, dormitories, fraternities, sororities, or group of individuals whose association is seasonal or similar in nature to a resort, a hotel, a motel, boarding house, or lodging house. Under the Fair Housing Act, community residences, as is newly defined to include former definition of group homes, must meet the requirements applied to all such families under the P V zoning code. So as we look at community residences, it actually is broken down into two separate areas, family community residences and traditional community residences. Community residences are defined as residential living arrangements for five to 12 unrelated individuals with disabilities, in need of mutual support furnished by other residents, as well as support services, if any, provided by the staff of such a home. Residents may be self-governing or supervised by sponsoring entity or staff, residents may also have access to meals at the home, and treatment is incidental to the home. Community residents do not include any other group living arrangements for unrelated individuals who are not disabled, nor residences for prison free parolees or sex offenders. Community residents can be further characterized, as we see here, by the family community resident or the traditional community resident. The family community residences are relatively permanent, are living arrangements, without a limit on how long somebody can stay there. The transitional community residents are more of a temporary nature, and are measured in months and not years, as compared to the family community residences. Now, this indicates which zones the family residence, community residence, and the transitional community residence may be in. Pursuant to this amendment, family community residence would be permitted in the R1L, the R1MH, the RCU zones, if they are at least 800 feet away from a similar type residence. Now, these family community residents must be licensed or certified by the state of Arizona, and they must have certification, or have certification from an appropriate national accrediting agency, or have been recognized or sanctioned by Congress to operate. Otherwise, these family community residences are only permitted in the R1L, the R1MH, and RCU zoning districts by use permit. So the transitional community residences would be permitted in these same zoning districts by use permit, subject to separation requirements, so that's the 800-foot minimum distance between the homes. Both family and traditional community residents, so both of these, would be permitted in the R2 and the C1 zoning districts. There is a reasonable accommodation waiver that the Development Services Director may grant, based on issues of fact in each case, as they are reviewed. Number one, that they do not impose an undue burden or expense for the town, or if the proposed use would create a fundamental alteration in the town zoning scheme. Denial of this requested accommodation would be appealed to the Board of Adjustments per Town Code 1329050. Planning Zoning Commission held a public hearing on these proposed amendments to Chapter 13 on November 13th, 2023, and they recommended adoption by the town council. After holding its own public hearing on these proposed amendments to Chapter 13 regarding the community residences, the town council may consider whether to vote to read ordinance 2023-932, along with Exhibit A, Amendments to Chapter 13, by title only on two separate occasions, then place the same on final passage. Staff is recommending approval of the ordinance amendments, and I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Ruby, I'm going to open the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on this item? Mr. Williams?
Bill Williams, I live on the 3000 block of, forgot my address, Taylor Drive, how's that, I must have been up too long in this hearing. I just want to say, you know that I pick on you guys occasionally, if I think you're doing wrong, I think you need a pat on the back and an attaboy on this one. It was not too long ago, only about three months ago, I remember we were over in the library, and about five people in a row stood up, do you remember that? And they said, and they used the word fear, and they said, we're afraid, we don't know who's in there, we don't know what they might have been convicted of, and we see them partying in the yard at night, do you guys remember those comments? It was like five in a row that night. So I just wanted to say, in this case, the town did very well.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Okay, anybody else? No, close the public hearing, bring it back to council, comments, questions? Comments, questions? Okay.
Nothing more to add, just questions.
All right, so, do we need to read an ordinance?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
After the vote, okay. I'm looking for a motion.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to read ordinance number 2023-932, with Exhibit A, Amendments to Chapter 13, Community Residences, by title only on two separate occasions, then place the same on final passage by electronic vote.
Second. I second it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dickinson.
The motion passed, ordinance number 2023-932, an ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending Chapter 13- of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, enacting Chapter 13 zoning to define and add community residence use and development standards, ZOA 23-004, providing that all of their chapters, articles, and sections of the town code, not herein and repealed or amended, shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law. Thank you.
Thank you. 8G, engineering agreement, Glassford Hill Road, Long Look Drive to 89A, CIP ST 2303, consideration and possible action. Ms. Ruder.
Good evening. I will make this quick. This is a very exciting project. So if you will recall, Simpo and their great leadership was able to get us $9.9 million of state funding for this project. And so this is for Glassford Road Improvement Project for not only safety but capacity improvements. And we went through a rigorous, highly interest vetting process to select an amazing consultant to do the design work on this. So just to walk you through the project a little bit, consists of construction improvements in both northbound, southbound, adding the third lane, sidewalk, curb gutter, drainage improvements, and pave shoulders between Long Look Drive and State Route 89A. This will complete the entire section from SR 69 to 89, three lanes in each direction. So this is extremely exciting. We went through a competitive procurement process. Our RFQ committee included myself, the town engineer, public works engineer, and a representative from Simpo on that committee. We advertised back in July. We did pre-submittals. We received seven consultant proposals, which was amazing. All of them highly qualified. We did narrow it down to the top three consultants and then did interviews. From there, we went into negotiations with Kim Lee Horn, who was the top-ranked consultant for this project. I do have Kim Lee Horn, Andrew, and James here tonight, so if you have any detailed questions. Just a little overview of the project schedule. I apologize for it being so small, but they are going to hit the ground running as soon as we issue the NTP on Monday, and we are hoping to finish out design come summer-ish, bid it, and then we'll look and see if we want to start before winter or hold it till spring. We're going to push it as hard as we possibly can. I know Kim Lee Horn is on board for this, and I'd like to bring Andrew up to say a couple words, if you don't mind.
Great. Thank you. Kim Lee Horn is a very respected firm that's been around for a while, so welcome.
Thank you for having me, and thank you for the kind words. Andrew Baird with Kim Lee Horn. I'm a civil engineering project manager. We started the Prescott office in 2016, so we've been here almost eight years. The focus is northern Arizona infrastructure work. So you might have seen our name on "We Designed the Gopé House" with Ernest. We did the Civic Drive improvements, which were the CDBG project up there, but primarily we focus on roadway and infrastructure projects. Myself and James Warren are both professional engineers in the office, as well as James Huggins, so we have three professional engineers and four designers in our office. So there's seven of us locally in Prescott, and then we're supported by our statewide and our nationwide teams. We have over 7,500 employees nationwide. On a more personal note, I grew up in Prescott. I'm a class 2000 grad. We moved back here in 2015 to be able to work on projects specifically like this. So we're really excited to, as Heather said, hit the ground running. In fact, we have survey lined up to start on Tuesday, if we get NTP on Monday, and just immediately get going, recognizing the importance of completing this project, but not shortchanging certain milestones that have to be met. So that schedule, although looks compact on the screen, but we have everything in there from making sure we're handling utility coordination every step of the way, identifying potential right-of-way needs, vetting those out, as well as adding a 15% submittal and a traffic analysis, so we can make sure that the recommended improvements both meet capacity needs and safety needs. So again, just excited to be here today, and I'll take any questions if you have them.
Questions? No, you can't, sorry. You can ask him afterwards, though, Mr. Levis. Okay? Thank you. Questions? Okay. So I know Mr. Levis has a question for you outside. Ms. Ruder, can we get copies of this in color in our boxes? Because we're probably going to get some questions.
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
We can make sure we can do that.
So we need a motion.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve a professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates for professional design services for the Glassford Hill Road widening project, Long Look Drive to SR 89A, CIP number ST 2303, and the amount of $879,789 by electronic vote.
I second it.
Thank you.
The motion passed.
Okay, now we're moving to 8H, which is Deeds Foundation's Arch Signs, Glassford Hill Road. Mr. Davidson?
Vice Mayor and members of the council, this item had been placed on consent. There were, one of the council members wanted to have some questions, and we want to be able to provide that for the full council and members of the public. I'll just give a brief overview of what this is, and then if the specific questions, if I haven't answered something. This is all part of our capital project for the brand-new monument entry signage coming into our community, so there's...
Excuse me. Could the conversation be taken outside? I can't hear...
Mr. Levis, we're going to have you go out in the lobby and talk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
So as part of our improvements to welcome people into the community and to clearly define the entry point into the town, into our entertainment district, the downtown area, this new archway is going to be constructed. What this is on tonight's agenda, we approached two property owners, and they have graciously donated their land parcels to the town for this project. So this is at no cost to the town. And so basically, what we're doing tonight is just accepting the deeds, the transfer of their property to us, and then these locations will be where the base goes for the new archway over Glassford Hill Road.
Questions from council?
So could you identify the two businesses that were so generous to the town?
My understanding is that it was a bank and dermatology office, yes. It was some type of medical office.
Okay, thank you.
That's all your questions?
Well, I thought he was going to elaborate a little bit more, but we will be having a study session, you said, later on?
Vice Mayor, members of the council, we'll come back with just an overview of where we are with the signage. It has taken, if you remember, this was well over a year ago when the council approved all of these items. There's been a backlog with dealing with this development of the actual signs. We also ran into some issues with the entry signs coming into Prescott Valley. There were some archaeology issues that ADOT ran into on a different project, but it held up this project, and I think all of that's been resolved. But we'll come back and provide kind of some, the colored pictures of what will be constructed, and make sure that any questions that you have, we answer those.
Very good. So tonight, what we're voting on is to approve the acceptance of these quitclaim.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to make that your motion?
I make a motion to accept title to the two foundation areas conveyed by quitclaim to the town for the arch sign on Glassford Hill by electronic vote for recording.
I'll second. Okay, item number nine.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor, say aye verbally. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.